Then the water sewer district. The town hall and the fire station, the transfer station and the highway department all receive water and in the case of the town hall sewer from the water sewer district. And so indirectly you all are weight pairs whether or not you're in the district. So one of the things is to take the district to court over our C-91A violations. Possible outcomes of that and considerations include legal expenses which would be borne by whichever party, probably with whatever party wins that suit, possible removal from office if it's egregious, possible remediation training for whatever elected officials if it is deemed necessary by the courts. It is also possible that whatever actions have taken place in an unnoticed meeting, for example, if elected officials made a decision and that decision was carried out, the court could order for that decision to be reversed because it did not take place in a duly posted meeting. So there's a lot of potential outcomes. It would all, it all has to be, it has to rise to the level of compelling the select board to want to do that and it has to be provable. But it is another further action. The district has received the letter. One can hope that that would change behavior. That's something that I think the select board would want to be made aware of by you all if you felt that things were different or not different. But it is apparent when you go to a meeting, an official declares things without discussion as though they are already decided. It can lead people to believe that there was discussion outside of the meeting that led to that declaration of a decision. So that is one way in which the town can get involved. The other way is really a more practical and serious reason for this public hearing, which is that if the residents of the district and the residents of the town want to dissolve the district, the town could take over the district. So that would require a vote, a positive vote on the ballot for both the district residents and the town. If the district residents vote to dissolve the district and the town does not want to dissolve the district, that is not something that state officials have seen in institutional memory. So we'd be facing some uncharted territory and there are certainly lots of questions about how that would play out. But one thing is clear, that it would require a lot of planning on the town's behalf. So while the select board could certainly choose to put that on the ballot or not, and likewise, the commissioners could choose to put that on their ballot or not, the residents of the district and the residents of the town could also put that on the ballot by a petition warrant article. By the signature of 25 registered voters in the district and also again with the town, that vote could be placed on the ballot of the district and the town. And it is important that the town hear from the townspeople if there is a will to do that because we don't want to be in a position where it is the will of the district and not the town, or it is both the will of the district and the town, but the town administration is not prepared for that. It's something that would take a transition period and it would take a good amount of time and preparation and energy. So that's not to say that it can't happen or should or shouldn't happen. It's the will of the voters. So you all have power in what we vote on. The select board would like to know how you would like to see all these things played out. So that in essence is why we're here. I would like to, we can certainly answer questions. There are more questions than there are answers at this point, but I think it's important for those of you who have experience with these meetings that you can share with others about why you're here. Because I'm just going to make an assumption that there are a good amount of people here who are here because it was a noticed meeting about a different entity and they have water quality concerns and they're not really sure what's actually going on. So people who have had an interaction or a reason to be concerned are welcome to share that just for the benefit of everybody else. And then separately, the select board will meet and discuss what they hear from you all today and decide in what way they may or may not move forward. And if the select board doesn't have anything else to add? Okay. So you can certainly ask questions. There's a microphone in the center there. I would welcome you to come to the microphone one at a time and we can try to answer questions.
Hi. Caroline.
Yes, Anja.
Wendy Chase, Short Street and also your state representative. Caroline, when you said that it may take a lot of time to try to get everything together, are you talking about for us as the town people to vote the 25 signatures to get a warrant going, an article, so that we can put that on to vote on? Or are you talking about all the preparation we take to just try to make things change?
It's more about preparation for change. The warrant is typically finalized in January for both the district and the town for votes that take place in March. And so the select board would need to, you know, so that could come in as late as January for something that would take effect, we're not even sure when. And that's something that the petition could even say. The petition could say anything and that's part of the concern. We vote to dissolve the district as of April 1st. You know, there's no way that two weeks after a meeting and a vote, if that were to approve, that we would be able to hit the ground prepared, running, so to speak. So that petition can be something that's worked on now. If the town, if the select board is feeling the feedback that that's the direction that you want the town to go in, it's even something that the select board could proactively put on the warrant potentially, but it's going to take a number of months at least from the time of a vote to be, to have a fully functioning part of the town.
Hi, Mr. Wills. A quick question is.
Use the mic.
Oh, sorry. How, you mentioned that having a separate water district board is not uncommon, but how common is it for the select board to actually manage that as well? And as for timing, because this would obviously be new duties for all of you to oversee, what sort of timetable do you think would be reasonable for a sort of transition process to get up to speed with what's required, the knowledge or engaging the expertise and the resources that you would need in order to take on those functions? Because we wouldn't want to say, you know, we want to dissolve it immediately and create chaos. We would want to have a reasonable amount of time if there was going to be a dissolution.
I appreciate that, thank you. And so it's September and we have until January to figure that out. In terms of what's an appropriate amount of time, I think the first step is to hear that that's the direction, if it is, that the people want the town to go in. And if it is, then we'll expend the energy to look into that. I would say minimally a number of months. In terms of your previous, village districts are created for a number of reasons, typically for shared services, which are a lot of times fire mutual aid districts, but they can also be utilities. They dissolve maybe one or two a year, but there are a few hundred of them in the state. They're not all water, some are just water districts, some are sewer districts, some are lighting districts. There are all kinds of village districts. It's a political subdivision, kind of like the town, that is not necessarily always a water sewer district. It doesn't happen enough, often enough that anybody's really good at knowing how do you dissolve these things and integrate them into a town. Most water and sewer functions are part of a municipality. Were a little bit different in that it was created for the Mill District when the Mill was really most of the town and it just kind of, they just sort of got created separately and were maintained that way. It could really function either way, either outside, you know, as its own district, as it has been clearly, or as part of the town. And there are advantages and disadvantages either way depending on your perspective. One of the things about having the district be separate is that whether or not you like what's going on now, it is being a political subdivision like the town, we have to find people to sit here and volunteer their time on boards and committees every year. And it's not, it's not an easy ask for these people to give up at least a day, a week, sometimes more than that. When you have a separate village district, you're extending that need by meeting five other elected officials, but within a smaller geographic area to pull from. So only people within the district could be a commissioner, a treasurer or a clerk. So at any time, there's going to, you know, at any year, somebody could resign and you're electing new elected officials. So if you see that as an advantage of being part of the town, it kind of eliminates the political roller coaster that we already have at the town level.
Good evening. Angela Matthews, 437 Locust Street. First, I want to thank you, members of the select board, for holding this hearing tonight. We, members of the Rollinsford Water Sewer District, appreciate the time you're taking to listen to our concerns and to hear what is of greatest importance to us. On August 28th, I presented the following petition to the RWSD commissioners, signed by 75 members of the district requesting some actions. I'd like to read it to you in its entirety for the public record. I just read pieces of it at that meeting on the 28th because of time constraints and I hope you'll give me the time tonight to read it in its entirety. And it will provide some context for some other comments you may hear tonight. Based on the asset management report completed by Wright Pierce and presented by Christopher Berg at the July 31st, 2019 meeting with representatives from DES, we, the undersigned members of the Rollinsford Water Sewer District, presented this petition to request five actions by the commissioners with regard to the recommendations for capital investment from 2020 to 2024 that identifies Willy, Locust and Prospect Water Main replacement as the number one priority. We understand from this report that the recommendation is based on system mortality, level of service and hydraulic deficiency and has an estimated cost of $1.2 million. First, we request a preliminary engineering report from Wright Pierce to be submitted with funding applications for this network system, Willy-Locust Prospect. Second, to initiate a request to the rural community's assistant partners to survey the income of households within the district to determine the median income. This data will support our funding applications and it may determine eligibility for other kinds of attention, including potentially principal forgiveness if we qualify. The outer district distorts the income levels of the people within the district, which is why we're requesting this. Number three, that we direct Wright Pierce to apply to at least the following three public loan sources to address the needs in the district drinking water infrastructure. These include Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund due just several days from now on the 13th, the USDA Rural Development Fund due in January of 2020, and the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund due June of 2020. Number four, to address instrumentation and communication to Porter Well immediately in order to operate the well seven days a week to achieve a consistent blend of water from all well sources in the system. This will protect the integrity of the system and fill the, we also request that you fill the vacant full-time operator position with a qualified individual and include the superintendent Ray McNeil in the hiring process and final decision. And our fifth request was to install a permanent discharge line for the Willy Street flushing hydrant. And I would comment here that flushing is a useful tool. It feels a bit like a Band-Aid and not really a solution to an aging system and infrastructure. And I have a copy of the petition for your record. Thank you.
Hi. I just want to second Angela's comments. Oh, I'm sorry, Mike Robinson, 12 Willy Street. Thank you for the reminder. I just want to second Angela's comments about the, thank you for allowing us to, putting this on to talk through some of the issues that we've been experiencing in the district. So again, I live on Willy Street. We moved in in 2014. I just wanted to provide some context to the folks in the room that may not be aware. But we moved in in 2014 and since then, we've had multiple tenants, we own a multi-level, multi-unit property. We've had multiple tenants leave due to skin issues that they've experienced with the water, which has been frustrating, but nevertheless, it's the situation. So we've reached out to the district as soon as we moved in. I sent a long email at the end of that first year summarizing the water filtration systems we've had to put in place to try to counteract some of the color, some of the odor that we have in the water system. We've, they've gone through a lot of superintendents over the last three years, or excuse me, five years, six years, you know, since we moved in. The first couple, we didn't really get much results from. They come check it out, but there wasn't really much they could do. They kept flushing the lines, but there was, there was very little effect of that given the hydrant was up the street, near the school, across from the school on the Willy and Locust. So I also should comment, we have two young girls. At the time, they were ages one and two. And so they're, so that was also a concern in terms of the drinking water quality that we were using. We have since been buying bottled water every week, which is an added expense on top of the water filters, on top of losing tenants due to skin issues. So on top of that, I just wanted to kind of say, you know, in the last two years or so, we hadn't really made much traction since working with now Ray. We've seen some results, some motion forward. They put in the hydrant at the bottom of Willy to try to better get at some of the flushing, some of the residuals in the lines, which I think it's helped a little. This summer's been really, I think the water quality's been worse than we've ever seen this summer, but regardless, the flushing has been frequent. So they've been doing their best to try to do what they can in the meantime. I agree that it's just a Band-Aid fix, but we're still thankful that somebody's doing something. But I guess, you know, last year, there was a plan put in place. We got a flyer in the mail. I think all the residents of the district got that saying, you know, rates are going up, there's a plan to start, you know, putting monies aside to start improving the infrastructure and the capital assets. So we, you know, we just started paying the rent increase, the payment increase and then come this year, to be honest, I wasn't really involved in any of the voting, so maybe that's my fault. But more recently, we, as we've started understanding, oh, do I need to talk louder?
Thank you for having me back.
Is that a little better? Start over. How do I want that to sound better?
Maybe they should hold the mic.
Usually it all sounds, yeah, but it's, yeah, I know.
Okay. So anyway, I just wanted to emphasize the point that in the last couple of years working with Ray, we've definitely seen results. We've seen more frequent reaction to the flushing, you know, as well as there seemed to be a plan in place for addressing some of the issues through a tiered rate increase over, you know, the next couple of years. So to be honest, I haven't been paying, been involved in the water district. I haven't been attending meetings up until the last, I'd say, four or five months when things just weren't getting, things weren't changing, things weren't moving. I felt as though last year, there was a plan in place to start, you know, trying to get funding and trying to correct some of these infrastructure deficiencies that we have. But, so I just kind of naively just stayed out of it and just let the district, you know, left them alone until I started hearing concerns about the new administration, just things were kind of road blocked. So in, I guess part of my, what I want to communicate is just, as of last year, I thought there was a plan in place to move the ball along and start addressing issues on Willy Street. But in sitting in the last four or five meetings with the new administration, there sounds to be a lot of roadblocks. They sound to be self-imposed, maybe they're not, maybe some are legitimate, but I just feel as though things are not moving forward with the water district and I'm just a concerned citizen living in the district. So I just want to share that with folks here.
My name is Jennifer Lance. I live at 439 Prospect Street. I too have become increasingly interested in the water sewer district and the operations therein.
Will the microphone closer?
Sorry. All right. So I've become more and more interested in the operations of the water sewer district and how things have been done, starting from the very first meeting of the new board where there were two commissioners, a third open spot with a really, and then lack of willingness to look out, to gather talented people within our community, where we ended up with a third commissioner that was appointed after two highly qualified folks within the town did apply and put forward their offer to become part of the board. So similar to what Caroline said earlier, or maybe Angela as well, seems like going into the meetings that there's, there have been discussions ahead of those meetings to make decisions, whether it be what the priorities are, who the new commissioner will be, where money's going to be spent, or what's going to be done. Things that I don't believe should be done necessarily in private session as a result of what I know and understand now from 91A. So as a result of that, I did submit a request, a right to know request to the Board of Commissioners back on August 9th. It was a three-part request and the first was about, let's see, communication between the commissioners. So whether it was one-on-one emails and correspondence back and forth, or two of them to, one of them to, two of them just to understand commissioner business that's being done via email, because from what I understand, email should not, should not be a way that business is done for a commissioner, commission. The second part was forward correspondence to and from Ray McNeil, the superintendent. And the reason for that is month over month, meeting after meeting, we would hear, I haven't seen that. Ray hasn't sent that. What are you talking about? One in particular piece of work that came out at the last meeting on August 28th, Clem Misha, one of the commissioners, looked at the body of work that was completed back in April and provided to all of the commissioners and shared via 8G drive, had been shared multiple times and it was looked at like it was the first time it had ever been seen. So there's this perception that's being put forward that Ray is not completing his job as expected, when in fact, I believe he is doing a lot of work and that there is a movement behind things to make him look bad. The third piece of that request was around some email communication, sorry, Facebook communication around the public forum that occurred a few weeks ago at the library. Resident Ernie Osborne had communication back and forth with Elder Vern, who is Vern Crozier, the chair of the commission. And there was a post that is no longer there in which Ernie said that he received private messages indicating that all of this information was a farce and a bunch of things, that I'd like to see what that information, information was back and forth between Vern as a commissioner and Ernie as a, as a member of the district. That petition, I'm sorry, the right to know petition was responded to within the required five days, but it was told, I was told that it took, it was a large request and that they needed the full 30 days, meaning that I will not get a response, or I do a response this Friday, the 13th, which is after this meeting and after likely what seems to be a contentious meeting that's coming up here on Wednesday, the 11th. So I just wanted to share with you that I will share back and with anyone within the community that is interested in looking at that right to know information, be more than happy to share and go through it as a group so we can understand and piece together what's happening.
Celia Leopold, 426 Washington Street. I have questions that I'm hoping that this board can answer regarding steps that have already been taken or not. I'm wondering if you, you've said you've started legal repercussions of sending a letter and there's a possibility of doing court down the line. Is that included in the town's legal budget for this current year? And you talked about the town entities, but you didn't leave off the school, well, you left off the school because they have their own board of directors, but they are directly affected, which means all of our children are directly affected. And that is something that I am acutely aware of. I'm wondering if members of the, would you like to respond?
I'll respond with what you have so far. Yes, the school is absolutely a stakeholder because they are in the district and they are rate pairs and so it potentially affects children also because they're on the Willy Street Locust Corner, which is one of the water quality hotspots. Legal expenses, if we, so yes, the select board elected to send a letter from their legal, from their attorney to the district's attorney. That is certainly well within the budget for legal expenses. The town is doing well financially at this point and we have no idea how expensive it may be to take this to court, except to say that I think it would be prudent to find out from the people whether or not they would find that this letter that the select board sent has changed the behavior of the commissioners. If the behavior's changed, maybe that would cause the select board to come to a different course of action than if people are complaining that the behavior really hasn't changed. So because the select board has sent that letter, that would expedite a court process because the select board can say that they tried and they took the first course of action and they tried to alert the commissioners of the RSA and the need to comply with it. So I don't really have any answers for can the town afford it? I think the town could figure it out, but because they're operating within a good margin right now, but who's to say? You never really can, you know, predict how much court fees may cost. And it is important to keep in mind that in theory, whoever were to prevail in a court case would owe the legal fees of the other party.
I know, I heard that the water sewer district is smaller than the town and that the select board is members of the community at large. I'm wondering if members of the select board live within the district and are affected by this too?
You have two in the district and one not in the district.
If we were to move forward, well, let me back up first. I'm wondering if there is current coordination between the select board and the water sewer district to talk about different entities in town that relate to water, like storm water is a select board issue, but water and sewer is the district. Do you coordinate with them about like drainage pipes and stuff like that?
We've had a really good working relationship from the district and the highway department. The highway department manages on behalf of the town, all of the storm water infrastructure for the town, but they have different permits. So they are very separate with regards to their permit to discharge their water, the storm water or the sewage into the river. So we coordinate in terms of if there's a water main break, we certainly work together to repair that and such like that, but there's no coordination nor really a need to coordinate in terms of storm water and their operation.
Is there coordination between the road agents, select board and the water sewer district so that if parts of town, like the old Mill District so that if parts of town, like the Old Mill Village where I live, has lead pipes going to the individual houses, are they going to be doing the roads and the water pipes at the same time as the Water Sewer District notified of the road plan, so that all of that can be done at once and we're not digging up roads twice?
That would certainly be the ideal way to operate. The most recent road projects have not been within the Water Sewer District, but certainly I would anticipate that the select board would talk to the district about anticipated road projects. We cannot repair or maintain or have anything to do with the infrastructure of the Water Sewer District, but I would certainly hope that we could coordinate in future.
And if things do continue down a path of deterioration in the Water Sewer District and the select board becomes the overseers of the district, hypothetically, would it be to the town's best interest to expand the district, or is that something asking too far in advance?
I think that's asking way too far in advance. Anything's really possible, but what's interesting about that, though, is that right now that's a decision that lies with the commissioners at the will of the district people, and that conversation, if that, if that were a department of the town and not its own entity, the conversation would shift to the residents of the town instead. So the town, for those of you who are in wells, if you had a troubled well and you were near the district, it would be a bit of a different conversation than it is now, but that's not really on the radar right now.
And I'm not sure that this is in the preview of the select board. It's probably for us as residents or the water district, but what are some of the pros and cons we see of the town taking over this entity? Does it eliminate some issues? Does it create more issues?
That's something that I think we can learn about better when we explore more, if it is the will of the townspeople to have us explore that more. But for sure, two small entities operating separately is less efficient than one working together, but it, but the loss, but, but the flip side of that is a loss of control because now you have a budget of a department which really only affects a geographic area within the town. You have all of the people of the town voting on a budget that really doesn't affect them. So in other words, it would become part of the whole town budget, so people who are not within the district are then voting on that budget, and you have select board members who may or may not live within that geographic area making decisions about what happens in that geographic area. So it all depends on your perspective about it. There's, you know, with any change, there's a loss and there's a gain, and it could be really great, it could be not what you want it to be, and for sure, if it were to happen, if it were the will of the people and the select board were to carry this out, we would do our best, with the best we could with that, but whatever, whatever, whatever government does, somebody's not happy with that, right? So we can't really predict that. It's, there are benefits and drawbacks on both sides, but those are the obvious points as far as I can see it, is that you've got a loss of control if it becomes part of the town, in that you've got residents, non-district members having a say in what happens with that now, a department, as opposed to a greater functionality in working together and sharing services and being able to communicate more effectively and just, you know, something as simple as sharing human resources. You can have two different people serving a job function, or you have, you know, you can have two people each working 10 hours a week, or you can have one person working 20 hours a week, and it doesn't necessarily matter, but now they can talk to each other better and they can learn from each other, or you have one person doing it all. You can sort of learn from each other better, but again, it's really about what the people find to be the benefits and the drawbacks.
And finally, I'm wondering about the meeting process because the two boards, I've only been to one of the Water District meetings, and it was back several months ago, and they ran that meeting very differently than what I've witnessed the select board run their meetings, and they had public comment at any point and stuff like that. I'm wondering if the way the meeting run is supposed to run is regulated by RSA?
That's an interesting question. Any governmental entity, the school board, or the district commissioners, or the select board, they get to decide whether or not there's public comment. They can put you on a time limit with the public comment. They can have an interaction question-answer. They, you know, that governing body can handle it any, one of a number of ways. What's interesting to me personally about how the district is functioning is that it's not consistent. So if you go to the school board, I believe the last time I went, they, they want their public comment to be germane to what's ever on their agenda that night. The select board is really pretty gracious about interacting with the public when they come to see them. They're elected officials who represent the people, their constituency, so it makes sense to have some kind of method of hearing from those people. So it's not governed by RSA, except to say that the, that the law says that they can control it, but if they're not going to allow for public comment, they ought to allow for some other way to receive feedback and get information back out to the people. Civility, though, is another matter. Like, you know, they haven't been always very kind to people, and that certainly isn't addressed in the RSA.
I'm Brock Gilbertson at 43 South Street. You mentioned that the letter went from the select board, town, to the attorneys, and you were interested in public feedback on if we noticed any changes. You were looking for public feedback to see if we observed any changes in behavior. Can you tell us approximately what the date of that letter was?
They acknowledged receipt of it at their last meeting about two weeks ago, and it went, it went out shortly before that, so they probably received it within a day or two of the week, of that week. So they've had it for probably approximately two to three weeks.
Kim Singh-Hollier, 14 Turgeon Way. I have a few questions. I have a few questions. First, have you made any attempt to create an advisory board to mediate this issue between the select board and the Water and Sewer Commission? Has there been any attempt to sit down at the table and talk through this?
No.
Why is that?
It just hasn't. It hasn't been a conversation point. It hasn't been the will of the board at this point.
But, so you haven't taken the first steps in trying to resolve the issue. You want to just get rid of the Water and Sewer Commission. That's, that's the first thing on the table?
No. In fact, we are not reporting the will of this board at all. This is a public hearing for them to hear about what everybody else wants. They have not decided in what way or if at all to move forward with anything. It's just important for them to know the will of the people so that they can act accordingly and be prepared for whatever that might be.
Do you think that would be a good first step?
Not necessarily, but it's not up to me.
Second question is, can you guarantee that if the town takes over the Water and Sewer Commission, that private well and septic owners will not be impacted at all financially? That we won't be on the hook for this $1.2 million bond or any of the tax increases?
That's a really good question. Thank you for asking it. And yes, it would function financially very separately. It would not be legal for the town to charge taxpayers for services that, you know, are not germane to them. In other words, not much about the finances would operate differently. There would still be rates that help pay for the operations of what happened within that geographic area, and so there would be for sure a portion of my time and maybe other people's time at the town office that would be dedicated to the fact that we're interacting with public and the select board and, you know, other people with regard to those operations, but to my mind, if that were to happen, then a portion of those people's salaries would be, just like currently, they have their own employees who, who do those things, who may or may not go away, you know, those in theory would become part of, just employees of the town, but just as those employees of the district are paid for with rates, likewise, whatever would be an appropriate portion of my salary and other human resources at the town offices would be attributed to the people who have water and sewer.
Okay. So financially, there would be no impact on people who don't use the services?
Correct.
So what about staffing? So the town decided to hire a town administrator, you, because the select board didn't have time to manage all of the operations of the town. So how do you anticipate staffing this additional work?
That's also a good question. Part of, it's not all about the time of the select board. Part of the reason for the, for the addition of the town administrator was to create sort of some institutional consistent knowledge and consistency and professionalism with regard to, we don't know what kind of time and experience the board might have, and so the goal is not really to put any, well, if this were to happen, I don't anticipate that it would be that much more burdensome on the select board. For sure that there would be discussions and decisions that they would have to take part in, but it would really be more of a burden on the town office. There are, as we all know, employees of the district that would continue, like, you know, likely to work for the district, and it would take some of my time. Because I was a Water Sewer Commissioner, in full disclosure, for about nine months in 2018 and in the beginning of 2019, I know that they have a lot of administrative needs in terms of creating and managing their own capital improvement program, and they need policies much like the town does. There would be an administrative lift, you know, for sure. How much time, how many hours? I don't know that I'm ready to say, except that that work needs to get done, whether or not those people are employees of the district now, or whether or not they, it's town employee hours attributed to the people who are on Water and Sewer. In either case, the needs are the same and should be addressed.
So what sort of expertise do you think that this board has that the current water commission doesn't have that makes it attractive for the select board to take over?
I think that's really for the people to determine, and I don't think it's necessarily up for, I don't think it's all about the select board and the commissioners necessarily. I think it's about consolidation for efficiency or the desire to move away from trying to find more elected officials within a smaller geographic area. I think, I think it's kind of important to recognize that while there are concerns right now for who the commissioners are right now, it's part of government in the political system that the commissioners and likewise the select board can change at any time, and so it's not about who's in power at the time and what their skill set is. It's about what is the best way to move forward overall for the residents and for the people of the district, which may or may not be about what's going on and who's in office now, but I think that's really for the people to decide.
So what I'm hearing is that there are a lot of unanswered questions, a lot of open questions, so I propose that we actually, if we're going to put this on the ballot, that is a study, and that we actually do some research. We also, you know, collaborate with other towns that have done this before we make that sort of decision.
Stuart Willis again. Back to asking us what it is that we want to see happen next. I think for one thing, the threat of a lawsuit or going through court, for members of the district and the town, either way, we're going to lose because, and bear the cost of it. Doesn't matter whether you win or the district wins, we're going to have to pay for it ourselves. So I don't believe that going further with legal action, trying to force anybody's hand is really required, and something we have to remember as a community is that these are elected positions, and through the democratic process, we can change these people and therefore change their behavior and their actions and what they're doing. To the point of, you know, better understanding the merger of the district with the town and the need to have a study or some investigation to what impacts and what aspects are going to change, I think that is a more important step to take, and I do feel that we should have something, and as a community, we should be putting together something for going onto the ballot to, to require our officials or to change those officials to get the action we want, but personally, I don't know that legal action and trying to force anybody to do anything is the right way, and I don't know that trying to come up with a conclusion as to dismantling the water district with what little knowledge we have is the best done immediately like this, but I do want to say I appreciate you guys putting together this forum so that we can all discuss this and put forward our concerns and ask our questions, and hopefully with the next ballot, we will see some change, and if anything comes out of all of this issue, it's, I think people are a lot more engaged with looking at those ballots and considering who needs to go in there and who we're voting for and who we're picking, and hopefully we'll see some good action in the next ballots.
So I agree with the comments, the last two folks who commented, Miss Hulair and, I'm sorry.
Stuart's.
Stuart's comments. We are a small town, and I don't see legal proceedings as particularly effective in solving this problem. I do agree that the democratic process is the best way to, the approach to take, particularly since our legal fees are pretty high right now for our small Water Sewer District, and with the budget cuts that were made at the March meeting totaling $80,000, adding the almost $20,000 in legal fees, we're at $100,000 on a tight budget already, and I'd be concerned about any further actions legally that would negatively impact, and I ask you just to take that into consideration as you consider your next steps. And I thought the suggestion of a conversation about perhaps even how, the best way to run those meetings and how to maintain positive relations with the constituents might be more useful than pursuing legal means. And the other thought that I had is that it seems so premature to be talking about the town taking over the sewer, Water Sewer District. It's part of a long conversation that it will take as much time as the school district is taking to thoughtfully think through the best way to operate as a district, and I don't know where I stand on that. I think it's an open conversation, and certainly the members of the Water Sewer District have to vote on that as well as the members of the town, and we, of course, live in both places, so we'll be voting a couple of times over. So, and one last thought that I wanted to share. By now, you may all be aware of a theft that occurred at my home on August 2nd. Three communication devices were stolen from me, a laptop, a tablet, and a thumb drive, and I just felt the need to speak about this publicly because of the focus on my personal communication, and I wanted to ensure the public that there is nothing on any of my communication devices that would hurt anybody or damage anybody's reputation, including my own. Thank you again for hosting this conversation.
Hi. That's louder than I thought. My name is Liz Morganelli. I live on Willie Street as well, 21 Willie Street. I think a lot of you have already heard from me. I don't have any specific questions. I more just wanted to share kind of my experience and what we're going through as well, kind of like I did. There's a lot of children that live in the houses on Willie Street and the adjacent streets. I try to put in a request to Ray as often as we see our water turning colors. It's becoming two times a week, at least once a week lately. They come out and they flush the hydrants, which is great. It helps out. It helps out for a day or two, and then the water comes back. It stinks, it's dark orange, it's cloudy. I have a nine-and-a-half-month-old daughter. Since I found out I was pregnant, I've been drinking bottled water. We've installed filters in her house that, again, a lot of expense there, been drinking bottled water since I found out I was pregnant. I have daycare clean her bottles for me. I clean everything else that I need to do for her at work, but I still have to bathe her in that water. I still have to clean all our dishes in that water, and it's just really disheartening that there is nothing that we feel like we can do. And there was mention that this impacts the entire town. We would like to move. Our house isn't big enough for us. We don't feel like we can move. It's going to be hard for us to sell our house with this huge outstanding issue. It feels like we're trapped, feels like we can't grow our family because our house isn't big enough as it is, so we're facing some of those issues. It's just the concern about, again, the kids on our street, the kids getting the water across the street at the school. It's just, I don't know, I just wanted to share that in case people are wondering, what's the big issue on Willie Street? What's the big deal? You know, I'd happily share bottled water from my house anytime if anybody wants to see it. Just wanted to share that.
I don't live in the water district, but I think that those of us who don't live in the district are concerned and hope that the district will be well-run and successful in delivering good water and properly taking care of the sewer systems of the district. If these things are done well, then we don't have to be worried about our school or our fire department or a town hall and things like that. We don't have to be worried about suits that may spill over to the town somehow. So I think what we're all looking for is for everything to be running smoothly and well, and that's what we're all hoping for. If there's anything that the town can do to try to encourage that to happen or to work with the water district, with the water village district and sewer district, it would be very good. I think the letter is a great job, but I also agree that having to go forward with a suit would be hard because the people in the district will pay the legal fees on that side, and the people in the town will pay the legal fees on our side, and it just goes on and on, and I don't think anybody wants that. I think that the people of the district do have a lot of power, and as long as they're willing to use it, they can do what they need to do coming this March. And if they do that, I think they will be successful if they don't feel that their concerns are falling on ears that are willing to hear.
Hi, Wendy Chase again, Short Street. When we had the meeting at the library, I know like the last, one of the last questions was about the warrant article that we did already pass to be able to start doing some infrastructure changes and help update things. And I remember somebody saying that it had actually, even though we voted it in, it was not, it wasn't approved by the water commission. How does that work, and what's the sense of us putting in warrant articles if we're going to be overruled, no matter what it is?
Whenever there's a warrant article to spend money, the governing body always has the authority not to carry it out in case something changes and it just turns out not to be a good idea. For example, the people approved the purchase of a new boiler for the town hall that's been approved, and the select board's held off on that because we have information that suggests we may be able to get some more life out of it. And so the select board is going to take a vote, and it looks like they will carry that money over for one more year, which they can do, just in case the boiler maybe really needs to get replaced next year. So the district, again, works in a very similar way. Anything that's money-oriented, the commissioners can certainly choose not to do it for whatever reason. Elected officials have a lot of power depending on what the position is. With regard to an article to dissolve the district, that's not something that the district itself would carry out, but that's something, the state keeps an eye on everything that all the municipalities are voting on. The law allows for them to not expend money, even though they have the authority and the approval of the voters to spend that money. The law allows for that, but it's not within the purview of the commissioners to elect to not carry that out. So you do have a power if it is the will of the people to do that. It would happen, whether or not, you know, it's just about the how that it happens that leaves a lot of questions.
Henry St. Hulier, 14 Turgeon Way. I would just like to know if there's somebody here from the water commission that could summarize the corrective actions that are being taken and any long-term plans that they're talking about.
Are there any commissioners that want to come address the body?
I'm here. I think I'm into.
My name is Clemisho. I was, I was accepted. Hello, my name is Clemisho. I'm a commissioner. I was appointed in May 8th of this year, and I got involved because I didn't like the way the budget was done and some of the things that were being done as far as other things in the district. But as far as speaking out for or against what's going on tonight, I came here to listen. That's all I came here for. I want to find out what people are talking about, what was being said. I'm interested in the water district and the sewer district as well. I wouldn't, at my age of 76, go out and get into all this bullshit, if you want to put it that way mildly, for my health. I was involved with the district for 12 years. I gave my best then, and I was hoping to give it a few more years to get it back on track again after seeing some of the things that happened I knew was approved of. But the question I've got right now, I've got for you guys and people in here right now, if you want to ask it. In 2018, nothing was done with Willie Street. The budget for 2019 didn't contain one penny talking to Willie Street. And now the new commissioners take over, it flares up, it's the biggest thing going. There's something missing in that aspect to me. We do have things working to try to get Willie Street squared away. One thing we have to find out, where we are financially, how much we can borrow, all those things come into play, and that's what we're working towards right now. We have a request out for drawings for Willie Street at this point in time. Even though we don't have funds to do it, we're looking to see if we can expend the funds to get it done so we can support Willie Street on an article this year. But, you know, there's no guarantee at this point in time. We're trying to get in that direction. Not everybody knows what we're doing, but that's what we're trying to do. But it still irks me that it's a big thing, warrant mismanagement, which is bullshit. If you look at the people who were here before, what did they spend their money in their budget last year? What was all the money spent? There was not a penny left. They expended it by $25,000. You know, it doesn't make sense. If you plan to take care of something in this town, let's take care of it. Thank you.
Frank Roselli, 464 Stockdale Circle. 464 Stockdale Circle, past commission. So we all know that Willie Street was a problem. It also takes time, I agree, to put together a plan. But the plan was to put in a flushing hydrant, to change the, to add a chemical to the system, to later on be able to flush at will more often, which was denied, and to work to get the funding. The earliest we were going to be able to do anything with Willie Street was 2020. The brakes got put on in March. That's number one. Number two, I went on the board about four years ago. I was asked to come in because the current superintendent wasn't doing much. He'd come to work, work a few hours, go home. The commissioners that were on the board at that time were frustrated, so they asked me to come in. They were looking for some new blood. So I came on. I asked the commissioner to do, you know, we would have our meetings, and instead of having a 10-minute meeting, it became an hour-long meeting, an hour-and-a-half meeting. The other commissioners weren't too happy about that. But what ended up happening was the superintendent quit because we were asking him to do his job. My son was an employee of Water and Sewer from 2013 or so on, family, friends. And my son got called in 2013 from the Department of Environmental Services asking how the plant was going. I wasn't a commissioner until 15. My son in Kentucky, going to school for fire arson investigation, said, why are you calling me? And they said, oh, the commissioners told us that you were the one in charge. So this stuff that was going on years ago, we shouldn't be proud of. I sat for the first year in 15, just listened. Next year, I asked a lot of questions. One of the questions was, how come, how come we don't talk about the budget? How come one guy on the board takes care of the budget? We don't talk about it, we don't approve it, we just, the budget is the same number. It used to account to about $600,000. One was 297, and the other one was 304, something like that, 304,000. And I was told, we're all set, we can't raise taxes, nobody in the town wants the taxes to go up, I mean, not the taxes, the rates to go up. So first year, I was quiet, second year, I asked questions, third year, we had some tough decisions to make. And one of them was, hey, we really need to get a superintendent in that is going to do the job and work. So we got in Ray. Ray did a fabulous job, but no one, the other two commissioners knew that Ray did a fabulous job, but they knew that the budget wouldn't support Ray being there. So what did they do? They quit. That's all I have to say.
I'm hoping that the select board could enlighten me or the town administrator, but all the budgets go through the budget committee prior to the official votes by the town. Is that correct?
Yes. Water, town, and school are all evaluated and go through the process with the official budget committee.
And I know the select board, whatever's in your budget has to be accounted for at the end of the year, whether you carry it over or it gets used. Is that the proposed budget that was passed through the budget committee and the town vote, and is that the same for the water district? Is there a different process for the budgeting?
They have to follow some rules what a selectman do, as well as the school board. We all have to be accountable for what we spend our money on and all those same reports.
The budget committee is an official budget committee, which means that they are charged with making sure that the officials in charge of their entity, the school, water sewer district, and town are staying within their budget, and if it looks like they're overexpending, then they have to speak to that and have a plan. But that is the function of the budget committee.
So I saw a comment, I saw a comment that says if it's in the budget, allocate it for that, then it has to go towards that. So I'm a little confused. The town, when we voted in the water sewer district to cut the $80,000, we took it out of a certain part of the budget. So does that mean that part of the budget is now depleted by that much?
That's a good question. So first, let me just say warrant articles. Warrant articles have to be spent on what the language says they have to be spent on. And then with regard to operating budget, the commissioners or the select board have bottom-line authority, which means that they can move money around at will as long as they don't go over the bottom line of the budget. The water sewer district, I think, would answer this question a little bit differently, but from my time on the water sewer district, my understanding from the auditor, who is the same auditor that the town uses, those funds are, let me redirect. The $80,000 cut was absolutely in one or the other, and it was not half in each, so to speak. They are separate budgets, so my understanding is that they would have to live within an $80,000 cut in sewer, if it was a sewer cut, or in water, but wherever that cut was.
My understanding at a meeting that there, I'm just going to throw a ballpark out, is about $300,000 in the account. It's one big account. They don't know what's water, what's sewer. It all got meshed together. At one point, it might have been one big account with two columns, but right now, it's all one big account. They don't know, it's not broken up 60/40, it's not broken up 50/50, unless it's been broken up since the meeting that we talked about it. So say there's $300,000 in there. One of the reasons why the warrant article hasn't gone through or something, or some of the things haven't gone through, is my understanding, is because that $300,000, they don't know how to break it up. So they haven't made that decision on whether it's going to be like 60/40 water sewer, 50/50 water sewer, or that type of thing. It's one big account that hasn't, that they, as the three, haven't decided how to break up the, say, $300,000. So that's a stalling point, along with looking up for other information. I'm a little bit worried about that. Maybe 60/40 water sewer, I don't know, but they feel that a lot of that might be sewer, but they don't know. So they're looking back in the paperwork, they can't find where the two columns have merged, is my understanding. So I'm not sure at what point they're going to make that decision and then start things rolling.
That, to Mrs. Lorian's point, the $300,000 is their general fund, it's not operating fund. So operating funds, this $80,000 cut, is in either water or in sewer, and those are kept separate. The general fund has not been touched, is my understanding, in a number of years, and they are combined funds. They should not be combined funds, and yet they are. It's a prickly matter because to my mind, however you divide the money, unless you have a good accounting of how you decide to split it, you have somebody who's a water-only consumer or somebody who's both water sewer who could disagree with that, and that could be problematic, to say the least. But my understanding from the last water sewer meeting was that the treasurer did receive a directive to split the funds, so it may be that they'll be moving forward now.
Thank you.
So at the last meeting, they had thought that two-thirds was sewer and one-third was water, and this goes back 20-plus years, so we don't know the answer to that. We just know that there was...
Thank you. I was here 100 years ago. And probably my children were in kindergarten, and I'm there 45, so approximately. I think it's maybe my age, but it'll be my children's age. Okay, so yes, it was 60/40. What happened was when the two departments merged, they put the money in what was then the...
New Hampshire Deposit Investment Home.
Right, exactly. And it was because, and the interest rates were quite high, and we made quite a lot of money on it, that's why...
of money on it, that's why it's up as high as it is now. But it was 60/30. I mean, it was, what was it?
60/40.
60/40. I'm sorry. My math is bad, too, because I'm that old, but I do want to confirm that. And I believe that's, I believe that's what, how they're splitting it now.
Can you just state your name for the record, please?
Can I? Julie Goslin, Cricket Lane, five Cricket Lane. Sorry, I've been here.
It's okay. I can answer some of the older ones.
Well, thank you. I've been doing the research on that funding, on that account. Going back to 1992, which was my last year on the Sewer District, before the two districts became combined, Water and Sewer. The Sewer District, until that point in time, was taking liens out on property because we had no way of collecting funds. We couldn't shut off the storage, we couldn't do anything. So Candy Story and I talked, we assigned one commissioner each to form a committee to look into integrating both Water and Sewer as one department. In 1992, that came to fruition. In your 1992 report for the Water and Sewer, you're going to find, in that book, it says there's $10,000 in uncollected accounts over a year old, I think, for water, and $203,000 in storage. $148,000 of that was for one individual only, for his apartment houses. So, you know, without the combining the groups, we're in trouble, as far as that. And we had just finished a new collection system at that time. So I think, my understanding is, the $200,000 plus one bank account from storage and two bank accounts from water were combined into this account. I think I'll find the facts on that, I don't have that at this point in time, but this is as far as I've gotten at this point. So if I make a headway, it takes time. It's all historical data.
Thank you for talking.
I'd like to clarify the missing $25,000 that was insinuated at one of the meetings. There was a building that froze during the 2018 period. The insurance company paid about that amount of money, and the group, we had to, we had received a check for that amount of money. So we had done some work. Actually, I asked Caroline to help us with that, and we ended up accepting those monies and spending those monies. It was a wash. So this whole thing about, you know, someone in the board from the past is, you know, going to go to jail and going to have an ankle bracelet, was just another game that the commissioners, you know, had been playing. But I just haven't had a chance to mention it, and I did want to clear the air about that. So, yep, we had a building freeze, yep, we took in some extra money, and yep, we contacted the state, I believe. Caroline can explain that we contacted the state, we didn't even have to do half of the things that we did. And if the board had spoken to the past commissioners, at which they won't speak to us, we could have explained that, so the auditor wouldn't have been confused. Thank you.
Tom Coons, Stockdale Circle. You know, we're hearing a lot about things about Willie Street.
Can you be closer to the microphone?
Oh, sorry. How's that? But I have to say, I don't think a lot of us would be here if it wasn't for some of the behavior we see at these meetings. Even if you haven't attended, if you've gotten a chance to look online, you know, I'm part of the school board, I've been there a few years. If I ever spoke to anybody, the way some of these commissioners speak to residents, employees, I wouldn't be on the school board anymore. And additionally, some of the things that I've heard at these meetings, when folks, when commissioners are asking during public meetings about people who live at certain addresses, questions about non-payment of bills in a water commission, and, you know, and then making, not just asking about it, but making commentary, you know, saying, "Well, we're going to have to get out the old wrench and shut them off." That's unacceptable. It would be unacceptable in any board. But additionally, it's the failure to listen to residents. Now, I know you're right. The boards have discretion overtaking public comment and questions, and that's up to them. But one of the comments that was made was, "We're not going to take any questions tonight because it's too confrontational." Now, if you're a ratepayer here, a member, and you're going to a public meeting to discuss a legitimate question or concern, and they're not taking your questions or listening to your comments because they're afraid it might be too confrontational, then how is that representing you? You know, the acknowledgement of letters that are sent, those things should all be considered new business. If we get any type of correspondence at the school board, we, it's part of our record. And it's part of, at the beginning and the end of our meetings, we ask for public comment, without exception. We're not there, you know, to make friends, we're there to answer people's questions. So, you know, I know we're talking a lot about funds, and clearly, that's an issue. The issues with Willie Street, I'm sure have been going on for decades, and I have no explanation for the inaction. I can't speak for things that have gone on, you know, years past. But what I have heard is that just, you know, there isn't an answer, but there's no clear direction, you know? What's the next step? I'll also tell you that it's troubling that this Water District will not provide bottled water for those people that live on that street. I don't want to drink water or bathe in water that looks like beer. I've seen some of these pictures. That's unacceptable, to provide a whole new filtration system to pay for that. I don't know how much that costs, but I'm sure they're not going to reimburse you for it. So those are legit concerns, and we all, as members of this district, should think about that. What if it was our household? What would we do? So the question I have is this. Rather than asking the select board to take over this district, what can we do now to put together a petition to replace this current commission board? I mean, is there not a sense of urgency? If there is, which it seems like there is, I mean, this place is filled. I wish we could get this many people in our school board meetings. I mean, but is, I mean, we're talking about trying to really just revamp the whole thing, which we all know is going to be costly, there are going to be errors made along the way, which, you know, they happen, but we already have a commission. We have a superintendent, it's a superintendent, right? Right? I'll tell you, if you haven't been to one of these meetings where they, he tries to make a comment regarding a subject that's being discussed, and they tell him to shut up, to sit down. Why? Because he doesn't live here, or he doesn't live in the district. Now, I will tell you, as a board member, we permit people who are experts, who come in to speak to us, to speak to the town, all the time. They don't have to live here to be able to speak to our residents.
Like the superintendent of schools?
Like our superintendent of schools. Yes, thanks, Aaron. Aaron Kavanaugh, everybody.
Superintendent of schools at a board meeting.
Why on earth would you have the superintendent of the Water and Sewer District, and you won't let him speak? You won't let him speak about anything, you know, whatever the subject is, and he's right there, but they won't let him talk?
Why do you hire from outside of the district if you don't allow them to speak? If he's not a community member and can't speak on behalf of the fact that he's not a community member, why do you hire outside of your community?
That's a great question.
And I don't think there is any rule that he can't speak, it's a choice of the board.
Correct.
So if they're not enforcing anything, they're dictating their own will.
But if you ask it at the meeting, they won't answer it. That's the problem. So, you know, I'm hearing all this, and this is a lot of good stuff, but we're kind of tiptoeing around this, kind of dancing, because this is the first time we've ever had this kind of meeting. Is it? So my question again, is there anything that we, as a town, can do via petition to, I guess, an early petition, to address this now? If there were enough signatures, could we call for an election before March and to try to replace this board?
That is not an answer I received in the multitude of state officials that I spoke to. And the reason that we're having this forum, and I only spoke about the options I did, is because the residents brought concerns to the town and said, "What can the town do?" And those are the only two, not that the town is wanting to get involved in this, really, but here we are in a situation and listening to the people, that does not appear to be a legal avenue at this time.
So there is no, there is nothing that would prompt an earlier vote? I mean...
Well, also, you could have a cease and desist and prevent him from doing anything but replacing the note.
But who's going to file a suit?
That is exactly the point. So when, when something illegal is happening, it goes on until somebody puts a stop to it. So it's either criminal and you call the police, or you have a civil suit and you take it to court. But that's kind of the point of this discussion, that it's an avenue that the board could take on behalf of the townspeople, should the townspeople want them to, but there really aren't a lot of options.
So in other words, we're stuck with them.
Until March.
Until March.
Well, not all of them are up in March, you have to remember that.
Well, you have, you have one who just got elected to a three-year term, and then two who are appointed. So you're going to have a two-year term and a one-year term, or rather, a three-year term and a two-year term.
Can we have something on the ballot that forces them out?
What?
Can we have something on the ballot that forces them out, is the question. No, it's an election. So an election, as any other election, is up to those people who, it's who shows up, it's the vote of who wishes up.
I think what he's asking is, can you get the third one out if you wanted to?
No. No. So people are not up for election unless their terms are expiring. When people are appointed, they have to run to keep the spot at the next election. So you have two appointed officials, whatever the remaining amount of time is on those, on those terms, two years, three years, one year, they will run to fill the remainder of that time. But whoever is, like, not up for election is just not up for election.
But the same way that we can have something put on the ballot to say that we want to dissolve the Water District if that's what we chose, could we not have something in there to either change the terms or to force an early exit? In the same way that by petition, having, you know, a number of people, members of the district, put something on the ballot?
It's sort of like a vote of no confidence.
Yes.
It's sort of like saying, "This is unacceptable behavior." You know, I mean, how many RSA, you know, issues do we need before somebody says, "Okay, uncle," you know, it really just...
Well, it's about going to court over any one of those RSA issues. Having them removed just for the sake of having them removed? You could put something on the warrant, you can have a petition to put nearly anything you want on the warrant, and the governing body is obliged to put that on the ballot. That doesn't mean that what you're putting on the ballot is binding. So you can have a petition put on that says, "Have so-and-so removed from office for whatever reason." It's not, it's not legal. It doesn't, it doesn't work that way.
Thank you.
Right, to be clear, for clarification, any such petition would be on the Water Sewer District warrant, not on the town warrant.
So another concern I have is, we have a superintendent that's about to have his review. He's asked that to be public, and I think he's been denied that. And I'm concerned that we're going to lose a great superintendent that's, you know, turned Water and Sewer in the right direction. Is there anything the town can do to help us with that? And is it legal for him to not be, you know, not have his review as he wants?
So RSA 91A says that anything to do with compensation or discipline personnel matters such as that, and it seems as though an annual review would talk about such things, that the subject of those meetings has the right to have that be public if they wish to have that public. It is, it is also my understanding, as I was at that meeting, that they are denying that request. The reason the town potentially has standing in a court case outright to know is because of, you know, government transparency. You know, I'm not sure whether the, you know, you could say that the town has a stake in taking that to court. I think it's a little bit of, it's, you know, it's a whole different thing. I would say for sure the superintendent would have cause to take that to court because he is personally and most aggrieved by, you know, it is his right first and foremost that is being taken away by that request being denied. At the same time, any ratepayer, I suppose you could say, and the town being one of those ratepayers, you know, it's up to a judge to decide whether or not the town, as a ratepayer, would suffer from whatever the loss might be from having that meeting not be public. I think the point is, you'd have to prove that there's damages with that loss of that right. He would clearly have a potential loss because it's his right that's being denied to have it public. Whether or not we are all affected as ratepayers, or as resident-not-payers, or resident, you know, town facility ratepayers, you could try to take it to court, it's all about what you can convince a judge.
Robbie Kavanaugh, 13 Woodland Drive. I just have a quick question. Commissioner Crozier videotapes all of the meetings, is that considered a public record? He continues to say that it's private, it's his own personal.
That's a really, that's a legal fine line. A recording of a meeting, whether it be paper minutes or an audio or a video recording, is a record of the meeting. At the same time, if it's on a... I guess I would, you know, I would get back to you on that. I, you know, he can, he can choose what to do with that, you know, he...
You would have to retain, if it is a public record, correct?
There has to be, so first and foremost, the official public record of any public meeting is first and foremost the minutes, the paper minutes. If there is a recording of some type above and beyond that, then the official... then the official record would be whatever the government body is providing. So if he is doing that on behalf of the district, then I would think that that would be the property of the district. But whether or not he would claim that he's doing it as a private citizen, it's his private property, you know, that, I would leave that to a judge to decide.
I have a question though. There's two cameras taped in. So if one is Vern, who's the other?
No idea.
It's always two cameras.
I know Scott has been recording on his phone, a few of them.
Is it you, Nancy? For public record and gets posted entirely?
No, it gets posted to my website, to my Rollins videos.
Like any of the others?
Correct.
Thank you.
And secondly, at one of the meetings in May, I'm not sure of the date.
Just like this one?
The commissioner, he called a private session and said that that was going to be the end of the meeting. And after the private session, they came in and voted for the Google Drive or whatever that was when most of the public already left on the perception that the meeting was over. I don't know if that's on any of the records, but that's just devoting the behavior of how they've been carrying their meetings on. They were very rude to you the last time both of you. So that's pretty much all I have to say. I just can't wait till we vote it out.
Just to be clear, non-public is not taped?
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that. But what he said was that we're pretty much done. Meeting's over. Everybody left and they voted on the issues after the fact.
They came back in session, but...
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Did anyone else have anything else they wanted to add?
Hello, my name is Jeff Palaico with 545 Silver Street, and I'd like to thank the select board and the One Water Commissioner who had the bravery and the care and courtesy to show up and listen to a lot of ratepayers who are really unhappy with the lack of transparency and the quality of the water. I also would like to state that I went to the last meeting that was held at the library and learned a little bit about what Ray's trying to do for the town, and I commend him. And I want to put my vote as a resident that he is a big asset for this town, and I'm in full support of him. And whatever happens, I hope the town listens to and takes note of what he's trying to do to improve the quality of the water in this town because I've been a resident of this town for a number of years, and I have certainly noticed that the water is definitely a lot worse than it is in other towns. And I'm a little disturbed of all the lack of transparency. We wouldn't have to have this meeting if we knew what was going on at these water meetings. So thank you, Clem, for showing up. Please share to your, you know, your colleagues what's going on here, so hopefully these things can improve. And again, thanks to the select board for listening to us.
I just wanted to say, Tracy Lorian, Baccarat Drive. I just, I'm also in support of Ray and what he's doing. I have, my father is a water treatment plant operator, retired now, 30 years with a town. The labs and the things that he's doing, the safety equipment, all of that stuff is super important, and it wasn't there, and it is now. So that is quality, and I really see that. The other thing is, is I don't think there's anything that can be done, but I am very concerned with the legal fees that are accruing. I think there's like, my understanding, and it could be wrong, there was $1,000 budgeted and has been or has been used in the past for legal fees for the commissioners or that type of thing. And we're up into the 19, 20, I'm not sure how much, thousand dollars versus the $1,000 we've been using or that we've budgeted. That comes out of the monies that is raised with our water amounts and stuff. So I don't know if there's anything, you know, that can be done to put a stop, you know, like put a ceiling on that, a cap on that or something. I'm not sure if, you know, if there's a way to see what's accruing or why this is happening or, you know, if there's any transparency with that. I'm not sure. I have ideas, but I don't know. So, but I'm concerned where my money's going and how far up and how high and how much time is left in this year if we're already up to 20-ish or 19, 18,000 dollars. So that's just a concern I have.
Sorry, to that point, obviously you can't speak directly, but just from your experience, as members of the Water District, do we have any standing to ask for details on what legal fees are being accrued and for what reason?
Legal is by nature protected under RSA 91A. It would be gracious of them to say something like a certain percentage of it or a certain amount of it is for a category, like contracts or personnel or any one of a number of things that qualifies as a non-public matter. Whether or not they have to say that, I don't know. But certainly specifics about what topics are, their spending monies are, are completely protected under the right-to-know request, under the right-to-know law. And also to Mrs. Lorian's question, the commission has the authority to spend money at will as long as they stay within the bottom line of their approved budget, much like the select board has the approval to move money around at will as long as they stay within their bottom line as well. So that's for them to manage, and there's not really any way. I mean, by all means, you can provide feedback. You can try to speak at a meeting. You can provide them with emails and tell them how you feel about things. But there isn't any kind of immediate recourse or action or really any right to know anymore about how they're spending those funds.
Okay, anybody else?
My name is Chris Rachel, said that on Baccarat Drive. As meetings go on, often it gets into the technical and what you can't do. And the, it seems like such a far, I don't know how many of you feel right now, there's not one thing we can do. But I think someone has to remember about a little baby being bathed in brown-colored water. And it could happen to any of us, and that's what's more important. I don't know what we have to do to solve this problem, but it's not, we can't. That is something we can't allow. Not in our town. And it's going to be a headline on Foster's soon. Okay? I don't know what you think you can do, but certainly not.
You can vote.
Something has, we vote, but you know what? If anything, I think someone in the select board or even from the school board starts sending water to this family so they don't have to buy it on their own. That's ridiculous.
To the point of our children. My five-year-old went through his annual physical this year to get ready for school. And he's attending the school. I live in the district that had the high arsenic and lead levels the last couple of years. And I prayed, when they did a lead test on him, that he did not come back abnormal because I live in an old house with old pipes. And it means replacing all of the pipes from the street to my house and all of the pipes in my house because of the additive that keeps our water clean. I cannot afford that. And thankfully, he came back with no lead in his system. But I think about all the other kids in our district who, and parents who are in the same position I am, and then go to school and get water out of the water fountain. And I don't want to see this continue long-term. So I hope we can come to a resolution that helps the community grow and fix our issues.
Hi, Wendy Chase, Silver Street. Also your state rep. I just want to make sure everybody here knows how much work Caroline has put into this. We've been back and forth, working and emailing, trying to find out what we have as rights as residents of this town, of the district, with the state. Where unfortunately, at a point, it is up to us. It's not a state situation. The water, yes, the testing, all of that is. But as far as what we want to do as a town, as a district, is completely up to us. So I guess it is time, over time, that we put our heads together and we try to figure out what it is we want for the safety of our children, for the safety of all of us. But I did want to thank you, Caroline, for everything you've been doing. It's been wonderful working with you, your wealth of knowledge. And I've learned an awful lot, so we'll keep going with it. Thanks.
Hi, so all I want to say is, in 2018, there was finally a budget that was brought forward that was going to reflect some of the needs that the Water and Sewer District, you know, really needed. The equipment that was there couldn't, the equipment that was there, with the equipment that was there, they really couldn't do the testing that they were supposed to do. There were warrant articles that were created for both sewer and water that were voted on that nothing's been done with, and, you know, we're five months into it. We're told that there's no money, but yet $50,000 of the money was coming from that general fund, no effect to the ratepayers. There were 75 people that signed the petition. And these are just the people that we got around to and talked to, talked to, spoke to. And those people get it. They realize that, you know, we've been kicking the bucket down the road for all these years. 2020 was the year that Woolley Street was going to get done. 2021 was when we stopped paying for it. The rates were going up in 2019. And they had, they'd gone up by about 10%, but they needed to go up by almost 35 or 40%. Unfortunately, that, you know, the writing was on the wall. There were studies that were done in 2015 and 2017 that reflected that the rates needed to go up, and they needed to go up then. And that was without these projects that needed to be done. We weren't doing what needed to be done to run that plant properly. We didn't have it staffed properly. We didn't have the right equipment. And that's just the way it was. They were kicking the bucket down the road. March, that's all I can say. March is when, you know, people have to vote. You have to let everybody know what's really going on. And you need to get people that, you know, are financially responsible, but yet, you know, make it work. Make, you know, clean water, clean sewer. That's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to address the board before we close the public hearing? I wanted to thank you all for coming out. And it's really unfortunate that it takes something like this to bring you all out, but it's what makes democracy work. It what, you know, your town wants to hear from you about what you want to see happen and what your concerns are. And I would just encourage you all to stay engaged. I think the best piece of advice I got in all my research was to keep this public and keep the conversation going so that everybody can know what's going on. So thank you again for coming. Mr. Mishu, I do appreciate that you came too and for joining the conversation. We're going to proceed with the select board meeting immediately following the public hearing. There are agendas, and you are all, of course, welcome to stay and attend that as well.
Thank you.
Well, whenever...
No, I want to hear it.
Are we on?
Yeah, you're on.
Okay. Colin, the meeting to order at eight o'clock. All right. Approval of minutes at September 3rd. Okay. Approved by consensus. Community input. Yes, no? I have enough, huh? All right. Carmen heads, please.
I just have one item for the board. I received the, an estimate and a quote for the repair of the generator. And that is $1,029.50. So I purchased order number 1703, made out the generator connection in the amount of $1,029.50. And now it'll come out of Town Hall maintenance line item.
All right.
Sure. I'll move purchase order 1703 to generator connection in the amount of $1,029.50 for the repair of the generator at Town Hall.
Second. All right. Any discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have speed on Bear Road.
Actually, we, the Highway Safety Committee met last week. And based upon some of the research that I had done, I recommended to the committee that we lower the speed limit on Bear Road to 30 miles per hour. With addition installation of some LED signs that I show you in the past, as well as increasing enforcement and whatnot. So sometime in the very near future, you're going to get a formal request from the Highway Safety Committee to have a public hearing, probably prior to one of your regular meetings, to look at that issue.
Okay. All right. Great, thank you.
If lowering it to 30, would that increase, would that make enough of a margin to increase fines? Do you think there's fines?
Well, all fines go to the state. Town receives no money from the fines whatsoever.
No, I just mean as an incentive to not speed.
Well, you know, we are a reasonable prude law in New Hampshire. It's not, we're not an absolute speed state, which means that someone could theoretically be doing 35 miles an hour in a closed 30 zone, and it's not illegal for them to be traveling at speed as long as they're reasonable prude to do so. What's going to happen by dropping the speed limit down from 35 to 30, where most people do 5 to 10 miles, sometimes 15 miles with a speed limit, you're going to reduce that an additional 5, 5 miles. So instead of doing 40, when they would normally be doing 50, so. But what it is going to do, especially at the beginning, is going to increase the number of violators because of people who normally travel down that road between 30 and 45. Now everyone is going to be speeding. I think with the signs that we're going to be proposing in the very near future, as well as the enforcement, it should have some impact out there. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Fire.
Okay. Couple POs. First one is one that we discussed that, I think I already had a copy of it. It's for, basically it's for new safety vests. The ones that we have on the equipment right now, they just don't have reflectability anymore, so they're basically unsafe. And it's like everything else. Shelf life is what comes into play here. So we purchased 10 vests because basically everybody on the fire truck or whatever other equipment we have out there, these have reflective vests, especially when we're on Route 4 or whatnot like that. The ones we have now just don't have that visibility, as they said. So we purchased some, and it's, purchased order 1651, that come out of our equipment line item, which has plenty of funds in for 10 new safety vests.
I'll move purchase order 1651 to, how do you say this name?
Galeton.
Galeton. For $342.50 for 10 fire safety vests.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion?
So, do you need more than 10?
Yes, that's a fact. First of all, basically every seat, like engine tubes, new and peace, carry six vests. So the six there, there's two banana tubes, a community of those, two that are on, so those are our first vehicles we've, uh, back access. I still only get five more for the backup engine, and a couple more for the tank truck. Just because they were getting to be in the fall, there's more darkness now than there is light of day, so by our SOP, whether on fire or an accident or anything, we're out in an area where we want to protect ourselves, safety wise.
What's the unit price?
Eighty-five bucks or something like that.
Thirty-four, twenty-five?
Sounds good. It's closed.
All right. And so do you, there's no discount on the quantity that you buy, right?
Unfortunately, no.
Yep. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is the other half that goes with that. And the second PO that I have today is 1650. And it's, I'm going to go to cut rate batteries. And I have a list here of what we're going to purchase. This is coming from that new line item which we had the last year after we built the radio stuff, or started to, go back one step. The radios installations from the warrant article are starting to run. We did engine two today, engine two has all been switched over and it's up and running. And all the new, engine one is tomorrow, and I got to do some of the other equipment for Wednesday. So all of that is coming to fruition for what we've been working towards. We have that line item in the budget last year, on the operating budget, for some of the other needed portable radios we've worked on, some under the warrant article, some other things that we needed. Because what we're going to do, you've been in the station, you've seen, you all have, when you come by the fire truck, right outside the doors is a bank of radio chargers where all the portable radios are saved. So as the guys enter the truck, they put their accountability tag, get in the truck, they grab a radio and they go. What we're going to do is we're going to upgrade with the new radios and charging systems. Those radios that were outside the trucks are going to now be mounted inside the vehicles. So then once they're in, they're ready to go, because it's times when we go down the road and we get the radio, we're ready to go, we're going to, so that's going to be a problem. Plus, they're going to be inside working on the truck electrical system. So when they take the radio out, we always have a bank of backup batteries. That can go right into its place. So if we're on an extended period of time for any sort of incident, and we start losing battery power, we can replace that stuff. So I have a list here over line. There's some single battery chargers and a group rating charger. So for the equipment that we're looking to get right now, this is going to come out of that line item, the radio equipment. It's $1,246.40. This will outfit both engines, so that we can have all the radio equipment swapped over once all the portable stuff are done.
How does that affect the battery vehicle when it's charging?
When they're in the, when they're running, it's not a problem.
I mean, the engines aren't running, but when they're sitting idle in the station?
They're plugged into the shoreline, so they're actually operating off of the station supply. It's not a problem.
So it doesn't do anything to the battery?
Doesn't do anything to the batteries, to the engines. No, I know we just had that problem a little while ago with engine one because the battery's fried. That's just something that's recurrent with that vehicle. But when they're in the station, plugged into their shoreline, it's basically running off the station supply.
Okay.
Doesn't even affect the rate, because they have a transformer, so that when they're plugged in like that, it bypasses that whole system.
Okay.
So once we're plugged, we fire off the truck and drive away, now we're working off the truck internal stuff.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. I want a bunch of dead batteries on scene.
We need them. We've had that problem. We pick them up, you do walk talk in five minutes, and it's beaten, because the battery's dead.
Yep.
So that's why we come to the point where we just keep taking, keep taking some of that.
Okay. Move to this first purchase order number 1650, and we have $1,246.40 to Motorola radio, or no, to cut rate batteries.
Cut rate batteries.
For Motorola radio equipment.
Let's set it up.
Any further discussion or questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, this is, you know, sometimes it's too weak, like this is where sometimes it gets, it gets a little, backs up some of the hair.
You don't have to have it that way. If you have something in the corner, we can use.
I understood that. I ain't got to make everything easier for this thing. That's all I'm saying. Okay, Caroline, here's a couple other little things in there for you.
Okay. I'll trade you. I'll trade you. I'll give you the ponder.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Actually, I got a couple more things. Actually have a couple new guys which want to step into the department, and this is all their paperwork.
Look at that color. That's really beautiful. Thank you.
Gentleman lives over by, just over the door, I, another guy come here that wants to change professions, so he went to the shop, so it's going to be school in the fall. That's where we're just having a lot of hope, so we'll give him his due. So that's, those things. The one thing that, other thing I just want to discuss to keep you informed and in the room is, I'm sure you read the paper, you have to see that that new weekend's fire chief passed away, Saturday. He's 33 years old. Cancer, which has been a big deal for the whole profession. So us as a fire department, they covered us from, it was just the chief heard past, so they came up and covered during some of our time that we had to settle. So we are going to do, basically they're going to have coverage from Thursday morning at 8:00 till Sunday morning at 8:00. Nine different towns are going to come in and take care of, cover their community, so they can go through their wake, and go through their family services and whatnot, and take care of the chief's needs and the family. So we're going to be the first piece that's going to be down there next Thursday morning at 8:00, so we're going to, so you're aware of it. And all I proved is, is that our fire truck with a crew of five guys is going to go down and be in the way for three hours to cover it now. As repayment for what they've done to us. We're still going to have enough equipment in town, we're still going to have enough guys in town, but it's kind of like one hand is helping out the other hand, so that's what we're going to do with that. Just wanted you to be aware of that. And I kind of said, the radio equipment is in, it's being installed, so we're in a week or so, and all that stuff up and running. So that's another big plus for us, just to be able to perform and do up there. Questions? Thank you all. And I'll be down in the way to do some. Because the other thing in the way to is, is their assistant chief has never really been chief or command position yet, so they're, they're kind of floundering a little bit. So like, you know Chief O'Brien, out of Kittery? There you go.
Yep.
He stepped up and has done a lot, so.
He's the assistant chief.
And a lot of some of the other chiefs in here are helping the way to get through this system, you know, a 33-year-old guy that's trying to run a fire department is kind of difficult to recover, because they don't have a big structure. You know, even in our small town, our structure is a lot, got a lot more area to absorb these kind of things than they do, so. So they need the help, so we're going to do it.
Good. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay. Highway.
Requesting a non-public. Do you want to wait until, can you wait until the end of the meeting?
Do you want us to go through this whole thing before we do non-public? Are you going to hang around? No? We can do it.
All right. Got a few things. First of all, we need a PO for cap and concrete for $3,000, which I'm going to get back and cancel, but sign a rule. We dug down there today, and instead of taking, putting some pad over the top of that and seeing what was there, we're going to put a three-foot cover in there, and that should eliminate all that water problem, so. They already get the hold of it, and the cover's already here, but we have a PO with the cover with 1600 dollars. So there's a $1,000 savings. That's the old PO, Eliminator Systems.
Okay, so it's a, this one's going to be going in?
Number 1745, two 36-inch covers, over 40 feet, to replace, actually it's going to be on top of the existing granite cover, but then take the granite cover out, it would require taking a big excavator down there, hiring that out. This three-foot cover will eliminate and give us the access to have the water flow freely, I think they have four. They had a two-foot one, or the 18-inch one, three feet higher than that, which was the water that we had to get up to. This one's going to be right on top of it, so it'll take care of that void that was there before. So we should have eliminated the water problem down there. So this is a PO for 1600, up to 1600 dollars, if he says could be helped.
Okay. I'll move purchase order 1745 to Eliminator Systems for up to $1,600 for two 36-inch covers.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That project, the road should be open by, hopefully, no time tomorrow, which should be three days, so.
It's closed right now.
Right now it's closed.
Oh, what was the 21? Is that road that the?
1667.
Yes. We scheduled for three days, thinking we were going to pour concrete, had to have that. This is all going to move fast. We already got it in the staff, and then we get to pay towards it, we're 3:30, so. A PO for, additional PO for gravel for various projects for $2,000 for taking these pieces out. Right on the years of some of the gravel we had bought previously for the projects, so.
I'll move purchase order 1676 to Pike Industries for, it'll be 2,000, you know, up to 2,000? Up to $2,000 for gravel.
And then we're going to be getting another one for the new project.
All right. And you have money in your gravel account?
Oh, yeah. It's all part of the, it's all part of these projects I had planned, I just, was into that, you know, I didn't have, I didn't get the PO very well.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I mentioned how we're going to get the PO and say, if that, when I have to borrow this project, get it. A PO for $3,000 for hot dogs for these various projects, all part of that same repayment rule, with the company then, we're getting that penalty come on, church should be ready for payment. So that should eliminate some of that water problem there.
All right. I'll move purchase order 1675 to Pike Industries for up to $3,000 for hot dogs.
Second. All right. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
PO, Atlantic Recycling for $292.56 for two, uh, two packages of baling wire.
Move purchase order 1673 in the amount of $292.56 to Atlanta for recycling equipment for baling wire.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
How long is that last two?
It's only the second thing we bought at the beginning.
No one?
They are the two, so we can just, I don't know if we can get them.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we're going to replace some of the handicap signs, and I need a few more stop signs, to replace some stop signs that are not up to high visibility. So I'm going to PO for 600 out of the sign account for two handicap parking signs downtown. Handicap sign for the side of the elevator that's faded on the side.
What, at Town Hall?
At the Town Hall. And then it, we're going to put a entry sign with an arrow facing that direction for the handicap at the Town Hall. And I want to get six stops and the six stop sign faces, do we face the sign, do we replace that? So it's a PO for up to 600, I'm not sure what the shipping will be, for econo signs.
Okay. I'll move it. Move purchase order 1674 to econo signs for up to $600 for signs.
Second. All right. Discussion? Discounts or anything when you buy in signs? Because Bob's going to order signs too. Should we all order them all together?
Well, those signs that he's going to be getting are the solar signs.
Yeah.
So I don't even know if it's going to be carried.
Oh, okay.
We get this going the more we buy, but.
Yeah.
For more of the same type.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Just wanted to ask.
So how many more stop signs?
Well, more to let me think of the cheaper, I mean, I get six more because damage from accidents, or then we get something that needs to be refaced.
Yep.
So I, so what I do is I put a new one up, and then we'll have the, we'll reface the ones we have that we take down, and then have them for backup.
It'll be close to like getting all of them.
Yeah, I think that, I think six will probably cover it, but I would, uh, when we get them done, we'll see in the episode.
Any questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I would like to, to vehicle preventive maintenance, have the trucks that we have undercoating with oil undercoating, to eliminate the salt from getting into the truck frames and stuff. Trucks right now are in a very good position, have this done. We can have all three trucks done, wow, the new one too. We can have the big truck done for $400. The smaller, the smallest truck is a two, and then the medium truck is a $300 item. It's called oil, uh, nuclear oil rec, uh, oil undercoating. And what it does is, they undercoats everything underneath. Now, if like the old Z-Bot and stuff they used to use, and this, even if the truck starts to have flaking and stuff, the oil will force the flaking off the frames and eliminates the salt from getting in. We have money in the maintenance budget where we haven't had any vehicle maintenance, basically, because trucks in inspection right now, and the big truck come back and just oil change and inspect it, so there's nothing major on that. And I feel that this would be a lifesaving for our trucks to keep this going. Every year after this, they'll be willing to have it retrieved at for half the price. So it's something that, uh, it'll extend the vehicle life considerably, it's, you know, so it's just, I've got a PO for $1,500 with Pleasant Hill Auto Repair, eleven, to do this, if you guys are willing to. I think it's a good preventive maintenance measure, all vehicle, oil trucks and oil companies in town are right now, are starting to do it, because of the fact that the salt is, of course, affecting their vehicles, but we're in the salt all the time, so, you know, trying to stop it, slow it down from eating away at our frames and stuff, this, you know, just gets into all the different cranes of the frame. They don't recommend pressure washing the frames after they, of course, maintain, actually they say the sanding, it's on, adheres to the, adheres to the frames, and that gives you better points. They have, these had test that, they've had it off for several years, they scrape off a little bit of oil and stuff in the frames like brand.
Why don't we move it and then we can discuss it? I'll move purchase order 1744 to Pleasant Hill Auto Repair for $1,500 for oil under the vehicle.
All right. Discussion?
Do you know what kind of oil they put in?
It, the stuff dries on after, after they put it on. I'm not exactly sure what the product itself is.
My question is, so we have a requirement with our.
Pleasant Hill Auto Repair.
Stormwater discharge, well, I don't know, it's a requirement, wash the, what, so we won't be washed?
Oh, you, no, you're still, you'll still be able to wash the vehicles.
Okay.
But, you know, you won't be pressure washing, you know, they don't recommend pressure washing.
It doesn't go.
Yeah, because it'll take.
It'll take it off.
It'll take it off.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, we want to pressure wash the bodies and stuff to get the salt off the bodies, but, you know, and stuff like that.
Just not underneath it.
Right. The more it stays underneath, the better it is.
Is this the same kind of stuff that plays on 1, uh, 125 over by? Is this the same kind of stuff that plays on, um, one, uh, one, one twenty-five over by, um, just trying, can't think of the name of the name, but it's a spray-on thing or with a black on it?
Linix?
Is that, is that it?
No, Linix is, no, Linix is a protective coating.
For the bed.
For the beds.
Okay, all right.
Which we did on pickup earlier.
Okay. All right, food grade mineral oil.
I mean, I, I think it's a, it's a smart idea, and if you have money and you, does it come from equipment?
No, I would.
Vehicle maintenance.
Good maintenance, to, to get it in the budget. I mean, I, I, I can obviously be in that line, but, yeah, good, good maintenance.
You're at twenty-eight hundred, twenty thousand right now.
Spent twenty-eight hundred.
So, um, how many trucks is it? You say all trucks, but how many is it?
It would be the pickup, the, the small Ford dump truck that they used to run around with all the time.
Mm-hmm.
I did put in with the new truck though.
It's the new one that's coming?
The new one that's coming, but I have it.
It gets here before December?
Yeah, it's, it'll be here through December, and we get, we get back.
So there's four on total?
Four dump trucks, correct.
Okay.
It won't, it's, like I said, the small trucks, two, it's two, three hundred, then a four hundred. I just, you know, in case you run into some flaking issue or something before you leave, that's a chip off, it's an hour or two for that, you know, we'll make sure. That truck, it does not have any on it, I just put on two fifty, it's not gonna be fifteen hundred.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And how much is it? Fif, up to fifteen hundred.
So that actually works better if there's already rust on the frame?
Yeah.
Clings to it.
Like they said, it's better to have it only made to keep the salt out of them. We can extend the lifespan for two, three years. You know, something that's new that's coming out, but we had, when I was in go, we had trucks sent up to Z-Bot, which is, is supposed to be a good product, but they sandblasted the frame and stuff after they get them, and we were finding their sandblaste residue coming to the Z-Bot, so we're starting to show the rust. So, and oil, these are, you know, like there's a metal, you know, food grade mineral oil, so it's, it's not a harmful product, so. Like I said, the color, we're gonna get that buckled up tomorrow. We'll probably have to get some riprap, go, stone to put around the edges, that we get out of our gravel like that, so. Short street between Washington and the problem we were having in front of the old sportsmanship club, which should be alleviated so we can pay it, but we, we had to work on it over there last week, so hopefully we get that paid next week and that problem will be solved hopefully. And we'll see how that goes, maybe we'll decide to do between Franklin and Washington, because it's, they have the same issue, like water when it rains. I mean, there's no stone drainage and that's out of town, so wanna make sure the first section works and, and it should, and, and we'll tackle the next section, so.
Guard station parking lot, when is that gonna be paid?
That was a fill-in job for them, so I'm gonna check with them tomorrow, tell them it's ready so they can, you know, last them whenever they get a chance.
So I thought you guys, it's a really nice job doing it, but then when you have a heavy downpouring, do you have to go back and fix, fix them?
It's, it's holding up because we roll the heck out of it.
I, I know, it's good, yeah.
We pack it in pretty tight, so it's, it's, it's holding up very well.
Okay.
I mean, if there's any, you know, it would be, you know, something quick, we have to go back and, you know, if somebody goes in and spins the, spins the tires or whatever, it's, it's ready for paving other than, you know, just drop the edge of the road, so it needs to hook up perfectly.
Yeah.
But now, that's going, uh, I gotta approach to get to the problem down by the agents, we wanna get into that after this, we'll work with that in a period.
That problem, problem by?
Back of the agent.
The back of the agent, yeah.
Get into that too, so I, I gotta hold out, we brought it, it's supposed to do it this summer. But, now, that shouldn't ditch all the way around the back five, no, that is not property and it shouldn't be up to us to maintain that.
Right.
But that's causing a lot of issues down in Foundry Street, because it isn't maintained properly. Now, uh, I don't know what we can do there. I know the pipe coming down through is our problem, which is causing a lot of that water to go down behind the building, but it's, you know, I, we can fix that, see if we can get it and see what we got, replace that pipe, but I don't know what we'll be able to do with, you know.
Well, we just, you, you can give them their, your opinion of what needs to be done.
He said, well, that's not the problem, the problem is the pipe that's coming right to the door.
Once we fix that.
It all works together, you know?
But once we fix that and there's.
That may eliminate some of the water that's coming across, but, I mean, we almost lost Foundry Street, which is new last summer.
I know.
Last winter, so, you know, I still gotta replace the color in front of it. Going up to the water, through water pump, it sets high, if the water's not getting through.
It's further down the road, right?
Correct. We had to get this.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we've got to change that. It's, you know, it's, compounding the problem is that pipe. If that eliminates a lot of that water, then we may be able to wait a little longer on the other side, because they still gotta, something to ditch it. So.
Okay.
Check it out and see what we can do with that, we need something here.
All right, so, you know, you're waiting for your.
I wouldn't say much more.
Oh, highway visit, sorry, highway visit. You'll have an update on that?
Uh, next meeting I'll give you, we'll probably be able to, before the next, the twenty-third of the next meeting.
Not our budget process one, but the next real board meeting.
The regular board meeting.
Do it before that, before that meeting?
Yeah.
At the, at the highway, okay.
I'll try, yeah.
All right. Let's confirm. Confirm, okay.
I'll make sure I can get everybody to that.
Okay. When is your Monday night stop?
Today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the day I'm ready, we'll schedule it next week.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. All right. Town administration, twenty twenty budget review. Well, Rex's presentation is gonna be.
Yeah, I just, I.
Next week.
I didn't know if everybody knew that.
Oh, okay.
So I put that on there.
Recreation is gonna do their, their, their late, so they're gonna do their, um, presentation to the board next, or next, next week.
On Monday.
On Monday, so.
Next week is the budget workshop.
Is that the one they're doing, is it doing?
Next week is the sixteen.
Next week. They're doing it at the budget workshop, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, yeah. Cause I think I, yes, right? Okay. Two thousand nineteen, re-budget.
So Jessica has a copy of this now, the same copy that the rest of you received last week, so I didn't know if you, I didn't have a chance to really go through it with Jessica, so she hasn't had a chance to really look at it. It's up to you all if you wanna discuss it and decide as a board that you are on board with it or, or not. I think regardless, it's just sort of a document that shows that there's flexibility with funds right now and that we're in good shape.
Yeah, and, you know, we're very conservative in our, our re-budgeting as well. Why don't we put it on for the next meeting, give her some time to go through it and also to ask you any questions that she may have, and then we can talk about it anyway. But it was a very conservative re-budgeting, so, and we're in really good shape financially. I'm not concerned at all with it for that. Okay. Space needs, please consultant.
Can we just table that for tonight?
Yeah. Planning consultant contract.
That is in your folder. So it's, it's in the dark green folder there. So that's been signed and approved by Michelle Mears, so I believe you've all had a chance to read it and.
Has Jessica been updated on this? I don't, I don't, who's reading it? I read the email, I don't know. Okay.
I've read the, the contract also.
Okay. Do you have any questions on it at all?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. All right, so we have a contract, so clearly she got the blessing from her other.
So everything is good and this is just the last step and we should be good.
All right. Does an application happen?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's have a motion to accept the agreement.
Sure. Send who we accept the agreement to, between Lieutenant Bronson, Lieutenant Michelle Mears for, um, planning services.
Okay. Any discussion? Garrett, none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone else? I'm sorry?
I'm asking Carolyn, cause she's been a minute.
Why don't you come see me tomorrow and you can read it and see if you.
Okay.
I have Roman want to do that.
Oh, you mean the, the agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. Transfer station sticker request.
Can we just go?
Yeah, we can go in there. That would be done, yeah.
So this is a carryover from last week. I, um, I would not anticipate that the boards had time to read the transfer station ordinance, but Jessica, a, a new, um, a person, a new to town person purchased apartment buildings in town. They are requesting a transfer station sticker or some kind of access to the transfer station for when apartments turn over so that they can clean out those apartments.
Wait, I heard that was two weeks ago? Or, cause I was at last, I think they're, they're.
Well, so it's a different request.
Oh, okay.
Similar conversation, different request. Um, this person is a property owner, so we have a conflict in the regulations because the transfer station ordinance allows property owners to have a transfer station sticker or have some kind of access to the transfer station. Whereas our contract with Lamprey, Lamprey's contract with Waste Management says that all debris must come from Rollinsford. So, um, a property owner who is not a resident could, would, would then have means to dispose of debris, so the board was kind of struggling with this conversation last week because then you, you don't have an enforcement mechanism to be sure that the debris is coming from Rollinsford. But further, the housing standard, uh, the housing standard regulations say that building, apartment buildings of, um, more than four units must have a dumpster, and they do have a dumpster.
The house looks strange.
Right. So one of the options that was discussed is some kind of temporary measure. The front office does have a template letter for, you know, one-time disposal or something that could be good for a finite amount of time.
That didn't work so well the last time. What people go.
That's why someone was doing it for many years, right?
Well, so, so somebody got a letter that's, that was like good for a year at a time and they had to come back to the board every year and then, and then the board said no, but I think that letter was misinterpreted and, and.
Yeah, we have to be careful.
Well, but that did not.
Putting something on a temporary basis, that's my own point, because I think it's sometimes people forget that they're out there and then it doesn't get resolved and continue.
Well, I'm not sure that those letters had a specific timeframe on them. It was just that they had a letter that allowed them to go to the transfer station. It expired, I think that was more of a procedural problem, that there wasn't a lot of oversight with the expiration of a letter or, or there's no mechanism to re, to remind people to go back to the board and get a new letter for the following year.
Mm-hmm.
There, there were so few of those, and I'm not sure that we have even more than one now.
Right.
That, um, we don't have a good process to stay on top of those things. So, but, but that I don't think was for a finite amount of time, I think that was just, you know, kind of an annual letter, because they didn't, um, I don't remember why, but the, the front office objected to putting a sticker on a non-resident plate, so the letter became an answer to that.
Mm-hmm. If the argument is that they're going to be using it, maybe some say that they're gonna be using the transfer station to dispose of debris that has generated, through upgrades to their apartment building, could it be some sort of add-on to like a building permit?
I do think that building permits could play a role in monitoring disposal of refuse at the, at the transfer station, but I think they were more interested in not necessarily the, I think they were more interested in mattresses and couches that were left by people.
Yeah. People walk away and leave their property there and then they have to pay to have it disposed of or have a place to put it.
Do, do fees to dispose of mattresses and stuff cover the full cost of disposal or do we subsidize that?
That's not really clear, the intent is that the fees pay for the disposal, but without scales, there's no way to really know.
Interesting. And we're talking, we were talking about scales.
Yeah.
At the last meeting.
I was the one that was.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So it's definitely something that we're considering sooner than later if we can put it and find it for money. But, um, I just, my biggest fear is we open the door for any non-resident who owns apartment buildings we found. That's my only concern.
I just don't think we can deny the request of the few that says they are entitled to it. And we can put specific parameters in a letter saying you can dispose of couches and mattresses for a fee. Or limit it to a week or a day or, I think there's a, a way to control it.
Can we get another different color sticker for a non-resident?
I think you are, um, sure, but you would, you would, I would still suggest that you have some kind of policy about what does this different sticker mean, and you have to make sure the transfer station attendants know to look out for what the different sticker, like that there is a different sticker and, and what it means.
Right, and so that what, that means to me, that we need to get our transfer station manager in here and work with us on this, so they know what they can enforce and, and do it properly.
So would you like me to request that he attend and that way you can work out even like the idea of a temporary letter? Would that be, you know, so that you can talk about the enforceability of that option?
So is a temporary letter then taken away once that is added at the transfer station? Cause if it is, then there's no, it's no good.
Well, it's, it's, it's like anything else, you don't have a sticker, so they'll, they'll call you on having no sticker and then they'll show the letter and the letter will have a date timeframe. And then they either will or will not be within the date timeframe. So if they're outside the date, then they don't have the transfer station sticker, they'll be asked to leave. Um, but if they're in that date range, then they can dispose of whatever the date, so George.
Why couldn't that, if you issued that letter, call us and tell them one time they're coming in?
But they want it, whether one time, they want it for like.
Let them get one every time they want to go in, that's exactly.
Well, that's a good point.
Yeah.
And then one.
And you can control it.
Yeah. So then you would have the, the letters unfiled where the gentleman stands and takes the payment for the product.
We could do that.
Have a binder or something, copy of the letter.
And collect the letter when they, yeah, and they bring it to the transition.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, if it's a single-use letter, they take the letter.
Yeah, and then they can, they can put it.
They really have a copy of that letter.
You can just, so they're, they know that that's happening. And, you know, I mean, you can't, it won't be that much of any convenience, I mean, hopefully it's not written to the apartment for like, once a month, you know what I mean? So it's only gonna be when someone leaves, correct?
That was my understanding of it.
That was his intent, yeah.
So it was more of a voucher than, than a letter, a voucher for.
So then it runs, stands, reason if he wanted to get rid of the couch and the mattress on the same day and only had one truck, he'd need two doctors, one from the next, one from the garage.
Or maybe they would.
Purchase a sticker.
What it is, what's that?
You know, you could go with, purchase a sticker to bring it in.
Like a.
Like they do in the other towns.
A, a tag that.
Someone's worth and, I mean, someone's worth, you have to buy a sticker to get rid of your disposable.
Like a.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and that is an approach, that you have to buy such stickers at, you know, at the Town Hall and you have to be qualified to buy the stickers.
So if you wanted for a letter, or, you could, they control that.
I think, I think that speaks to a policy change, I mean.
It is a policy change.
Yeah.
Right.
I think regardless, you, you have a conflict and, and you ought to resolve the language of one thing or another so that, um, the regulations are in agreement.
So our reply to them is that we have to change our policies to reflect this change and that until then we can't do it, right?
Well, that's up for the board to decide and that, you know, so until, you know, so the board will revise the language and it will say whatever the board decides it'll say when you change it. But in the meantime is up for discussion because here we are in the meantime, so...
Well, he can get a dumpster, throw his stuff in the dumpster and have it removed and saved that way.
That is an option, but it doesn't really, it doesn't address Miles's concern that the regulations allow property owners to have some kind of access. My suggestion would be to issue a one-time, you know, one-week or one-day permit or something to, you know, be compliant with the regulation that says it's allowed. Limit what they can bring to debris that's not something that would ordinarily fit in a dumpster. And, you know, one would hope that the board has changed the regulations, however you want to change them, by the time they need a new, by the time they come back with another request.
Well, is he asking because he has something to dispose of or is he asking in general?
It was both. I, you know, they had just purchased it. I don't, you know, I don't, I have not heard of follow-up. This was a couple of weeks ago now, so I don't know if they are not renting this apartment because it's full of whatever they need to dispose of. I don't know. But they, they did prefer the idea of having an annual sticker to a temporary pass.
Sure.
But who wouldn't, you know? Yeah.
Yeah. I think we give them a temporary pass and that they need to renew it every time they want to dispose of something. With the caveat that they can't fit in the dumpster. Figure them out their dumpster.
Yeah, they kind of monitor this model.
It's not going to fit a mattress.
Yeah. Yeah, but they understand they have to pay the disposal fee, right? Okay. Well, I think we need to work with the transfer station and making sure that they're informed when we issue out a temporary. And the temporary should have on there what they're disposing until we can get the other ordinance and rules to be consistent and so. So who would, who would issue that out?
The front office.
Okay.
We can change that if you want to change that.
No, they are, they are the ones that give it out, but just make sure that they, it has to be detailed and they...
I will work with them too.
Work with them and have some kind of form.
They have a form, but I will work with them to make sure their form reflects what the board is saying. So is this a one-day pass? Is this a one-week pass? Is it...
I think it's a pass that allows them to bring a couch and a mattress. And that's it. And once they got the couch and the mattress, it gets retrieved and gets filed to the transfer station. I don't want to, I don't want an open end one for, no.
Okay.
I mean, that's, I think that each time that they have it, we should be able to, now that if this becomes a rule, then we should be able to give them one when they come down and ask for it.
Okay.
Or within 24 hours or whatever. But I don't think we should have an open end. I think that's what causes some trouble.
Yeah, I agree.
It should be just for the situation, the only that situation.
Okay. So you all now have the transfer station ordinance. It was on the drive in archived folders, but I emailed it to you today so you could have a look at it. And I think if the board's going to revise it, have a look at it, and because it requires, it is an ordinance, so the change requires a public hearing, that it would be prudent to look at all the ways in which you might want to revise it.
Okay. Does Ed have a copy of that?
Yes.
Should have.
Okay. So if he has any...
Yeah, I emailed, I copied him on that.
Okay.
He did too.
And he can give any suggestions on his...
Oh, for sure he would be chiming in, yes.
Okay, all right.
And I spoke with him about that too.
Okay.
To Danny, the items seem like totally off-base as far as cost go, like sofa $25, sleeper sofa $35. Like I would think the sleeper stuff would be so much more than a sofa, but I don't really know.
That's where the scale could come in.
Because it's weight for sure. And so that's definitely...
That'd be fair for everybody, you pay by weight.
Right. So we're working on that.
Right.
Definitely try to get that in place. So do we need a motion over that?
Yeah, please.
I move we authorize one-time use letters to a person requesting...
Non-resident homeowners.
Non-resident homeowner, yes. It's everything, not just that.
Not just that, right. To dispose of left, left products.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? I think we have. All righty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think we've done E already tonight. Yes?
Yeah.
There's probably more to discuss, but no.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
All right. We'll leave it on the agenda though, please.
Okay.
All right.
Table F?
Table F. We'll get there. Board member activities and updates.
We had a highway safety meeting last Thursday. Numbers, residents that were, came to plead their case that we do something. I think lowering the speed limit makes a lot of sense there, but like Bob said, we're going to come in with a formal recognition. We also talked about posting roads for late limits. Both of those things require a public hearing. If we do both at once, we choose to move forward.
Anything this week?
I don't believe so.
I plan on attending the Stormwater meeting on Wednesday. And that is all I have this week.
The planning board is meeting tomorrow night. There are three or four things on the agenda. It's going to be a busy night. The Silver Street subdivision is on the agenda with some mild revisions. It's not clear whether or not they're going, whether they have everything in order for that to be voted as a complete application. There's a lot line adjustment on Goodwin Road on the agenda. And then there's a non-conforming lot, a vacant non-conforming lot on Howe Road that is going to be going to the ZBA for, in hopes of building a single-family home on it. And the first step in that process, which is, in order to build anything on a, on a non-conforming lot, they need to go to the ZBA for a special exception. The first part of that process, according to our regulations, is to start with the planning board, the planning board to determine that it's inadequate use for that site. So that is also on the agenda for tomorrow night. Last week, the Stormwater Committee met the annual report for our MS4 permit is due at the end of this month. We're working on that. It's pretty much filled out. We have some little bits of odds and ends to tie up to make sure we're, we're ready to go with that. Revenues. Chuck and I are working on revenues. I will be, I hope finishing that with him tomorrow and forwarding them on to the board. Revenues, what we received to date. And then also what the board might consider to submit to the state for the revised estimated revenue report for 2019, based on the information of how much money we've received year-to-date. And then also based on that information, what the board might want to budget for revenue for 2020. So look out for that because how much we receive in revenue is very germane to how much you all might find affordable to spend. So we're working on that. We got Office, thank you. Microsoft Office is installed and it's fantastic and more functional. The firewall router has come in and Tom should be in shortly to install it. And that would be fantastic. It should improve our Wi-Fi upstairs and it will also get rid of a bug, a bit of a bug that the DMV computer's been experiencing because it hasn't had this firewall. But it will also allow for the deputy town clerk to start doing registrations from her computer as well. So that's very exciting.
Is that the DMV computer that the DMV paid for or is it the one that we bought that's having the issues?
It's, well, we replaced all the computers in the front office this year. So they're all town computers now because the state stopped buying equipment to support DMV at all.
So we don't have an active one that the DMV has?
Correct.
That's dedicated, but we do have a dedicated one.
We have a dedicated computer for registrations. The only, the only thing we have now that's state-owned is the printer that's dying that's, that we have a purchase order to replace. That is... No, she hasn't yet.
Oh, a second?
No, the DMV printer. I don't know. Yes.
Just the black one, not the colored one?
Yes, but you know...
Why are we adding it on there?
Well, I don't have an answer to that, except that it might be a good thing that it hasn't happened yet because in light of this new approach of allowing the deputy town clerk to also do registrations, I'm not sure if the printer that was specified in the purchase order does networking in the way that those computers would have to be networked in order to share that computer. Which is not to say that it's not workable or that it's not got the right specifications, but we need to check into that before we purchase it.
Because I thought I read something from them saying that they would have the old one connected to the deputy and the new one was going to be connected to the state.
That is something that they could do. I'm not sure that there's a lot of advantage to that because I think they moved away from that idea, but I'm not sure there's a great advantage to that because the old printer was getting replaced because it was...
Because of the reduced product that they, the state supplies us to you.
Right. So if it needs replacing, it needs replacing. So, you know...
Yeah, having to be hooked up.
So I'm not sure that continuing to use it is really worthwhile. And then you're buying toner cartridges for a couple hundred dollars for two different printers, one of which is not working so well. So...
So they can't be networked?
Well, well, let's, let's just hold on and see. And I, right now they are, it is being shared. So it is, which is different from networks. So it's workable, it's just not ideal. Tom's working on it, but he hasn't had a chance yet to research whether the proposed printer is now the right printer. And I don't, you know, I don't mean to be problematic because I don't want to suggest that it's not, we just don't know.
Okay.
And I also intend to go to the water tower district meeting on Wednesday night. There's a non-public and for George, I also have a really brief non-public, the topic of which I sent in an email today, so...
I haven't been in for a while today.
Okay, so...
All right, so we need to go into non-public for George?
Well, depending on, if George wants me to not be present for this, then maybe I can have, for his non-public, then maybe I could have three minutes because I don't think it requires a lot of discussion. I don't know.
Do you want her here?
Better than I am.
Then you can go first and it's fine. If I'm here anyway, I'm here anyway.
All right, so we're at the non-public. Oh, no, no, we're not what? We need to review correspondences, right?
Yes.
Community?
Yeah. The red folder has a couple of cemetery deeds that need signing.
Okay. Okay. We just have to put down the record, the deed, burial deed number and...
On the record, deed burial lot number NT1903. Do I say the lot name? Is that part of it?
You say who it is for, yes, man?
Yeah, who it's for and...
A consideration paid hereby Grant Lu and Ann Sheeney of Winter Haven in Florida. And deed number NT19-04 paid hereby to Lori Bossen of Prospect Street in Rollinsford.
We just have to sign here, right?
Yep.
Okay, so any discussion on these two deeds of burial lot purchases? No? Okay, so... Well, we can't sign this unless it's intended by the town clerk. Witnessed.
Oh, does it have a witness?
Yeah.
That seems different. I don't remember where we did that before.
I know, the witnessing also, town also, yeah.
Okay.
And so it doesn't have to be notarized, I don't think, it just has to be witnessed by the town clerk, but definitely deputy town clerk.
So why don't we leave them at the...
We can leave them at the...
All right, but if you would come in at your convenience and at least you voted to approve them, so then you can come in at your will and...
And sign them. Do you think that has to be necessary going forward?
I will, because that's going to be a hindrance for sure. Yes.
Okay. Do we have to sign the, the back of this as well? Looks like we do. Who submits these? Is that the cemetery?
Yes, he does them. I would say leave it blank and then talk to Andrea because she administers these things on behalf of, in conjunction with the cemetery trustees. So since you're coming in anyway...
We'll just leave them all blank. It looks like we may have to sign two places.
I think you're signing, you're clearly signing in two places, but since there's a witness, I would want you to sign either one of them.
Yeah. All right, so let's have a motion to accept these two and then... So, and then what we'll do is we will go in and sign them at the town hall. Okay. So all those in favor accepting the two, two lots being purchased, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so let's put it back in there and then we'll... Can you just check for them and then drop us an email saying that we have to?
Yes.
Thank you. What about the green folder, anything?
I don't know if we have all of this, if this one should be...
Oh, did we, did we get another quote on the repainting of the foyer?
Not yet, but I've identified a vendor, so I'm...
All right, so we can...
It should be coming.
Yeah, okay. All right. So community input? No? Okay. So we have a non-public RSA 91-a colon, colon, three, two for personnel on Highway.
I move we go into non-public for personnel issue.
Second, roll call. Miles?
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Jessica? Nice, yes. Okay, we're in non-public?
And we will adjourn.
Yeah, right after the non-public. We will adjourn, so...